Good evening, welcome to the town of Ankrum, November second planning board meeting. Jay, can you call the roll? President.
Phil, that, present.
Colin, one.
Present.
Donald, that, person.
Tom Brown Dollar.
Visit.
Aaron Roberts.
Present.
Ethan Raver.
So we have five of full-time members and our two alternates will be participating in tonight's meeting. As the town regits permits, so good evening. Approval of minutes is the first thing on the agenda. We have two sets of minutes, the September seventh and the October fifth. Does everybody got a chance to review them? Comments, changes, motions individually?
The other comment I had was on last month's, I was on Zoom, but I think he's having that.
I did amend, so if you look at the printed version as you as present on Zoom.
Anything else?
I did follow in the October and then make one amendment to the draft September. Meeting minutes where I corrected Don's.
Can I get a motion on the September seventh minutes? All in favor? Hi, September minutes are approved. October minutes. Any changes, corrections? Hearing no one, can I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Hi, the October minutes are proved unanimously, okay. Next item on the agenda correspondence.
I did speak with Ed regarding the letters that George sent to Ed regarding the site visits. McNally Lerner has moved their self-pense. The person who is in the process of.
Which application? I didn't hear that.
Person wrote.
Okay.
Sorry, Brad.
Yeah.
On. Putting the self-pensing back up. Working on the septic, working on the erosion and sediment control, so Ed is in contact with them and. I would encourage everyone to be patient during that process. Still, as of today, has not heard from Dan.
Okay, so we did get some response to going in the right direction, so. All right, anybody have a conflict when any of the applications on the agenda? No, okay. There's no old business, so go on to new business. All. This is for a short-term rental?
Yeah.
Good evening. So, Jay, anything on this, anything?
Ed reviewed it and sent it to us. All fees are paid and no changes, no problems.
No complaints. Okay, can I get a motion?
Oh.
Second. All in favor? Hi. Be next time.
Hopefully it won't take so long next time.
Hopefully next time.
Yeah. Uh, spurling? The short terminal, we could put it to the end.
Yeah.
It might be online.
We shouldn't be doing approvals without the applicant present, so. All right, we'll, we'll come back to that at the end if there's anybody, they show up, so. Okay. Holden, Holden, how do you say it?
Holden.
Holden, okay. A sketch plan conference for a subdivision.
Yeah.
Please come up and tell us about what you want to do.
I would like to subdivide.
That this one?
My ten acres.
Yes.
And do a three and a half acre parcel and a six and a half acre parcel. I have one of the properties, the doctor's surveyor. You don't think that's a problem?
Yes.
And actually, we're using.
I think right now we're, we're okay.
Remember in there?
Yeah. You want to give me six or seven places, so you need one extra.
I'll give it.
Um, so when I bought the property, I had the existing porch in. Which we then, my parents actually took out and put a new structure on. And I'd like to now make it a three and a half and six and a half acre parcels.
You said one of them has been replaced or it is?
I was eighty-four cotton tail, there was the old dilapidated trailer there. That we removed and replaced. What's it last year?
Yes.
Yeah, last.
You got a permit for it?
Yes. Ed has all that.
Okay, I'm just. I mean, there's a tiny bit of the house on the east that in the front yard setback, did Ed say anything about that?
That's the old one.
The, the three and a half acre parcel is the, actually the new house.
Okay.
And the six and a half acre parcel is the original house and property.
So it's slightly in the.
I think they.
But that.
Three and a half.
Been there already too.
Huh? The three and a half acre houses is there now?
That's good, yeah, that's there now, that was existing.
So all you're doing is subdivide in the land.
Yeah, we just subdivide and split down the middle and it already had, when I bought it, had two addresses for the property originally. An eighty-four and eighty cotton tail.
But the line in the middle didn't exist.
That did not exist.
They have septics in there for both of them.
Yes, both have drive septics and both assets have.
You know where the.
Yeah, driveways are all there.
Do you know where the septic are? That's.
Yes, I emailed the surveyor to include them on the map, you never did. I'm waiting for that response, but we know where the septic, the wells, everything are.
Did you replace the septic when you did the new house?
No, we replaced, we had it inspected by the.
Superior.
Yeah. Superior inspected it and that should have that.
Who inspected it?
Superior sanitation. And pipelines.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's sufficient, it probably should have been.
Well, or there's an existing septic and for Ed, that was sufficient on the new bill.
But he said it's fine, it's fine. I would have thought it was the health department.
No, not in County County only, that's just a belief.
So I can't see on this, is there the note or?
Agno.
So.
The agno.
Surveyor, I requested that he puts the agno on, relabels the doors and the stream. And that's a hundred fifty setback from that, and then to remove, there's a bit of driveway that he, there was part of the, when we were doing the work. He thought it was part of the driveway, but it was not, so that's the whole bit that approaches onto the six and a half acre parcel and the three and a half. Remove that and the survey map. And to add the septic and well locations of both properties.
Talking about this.
Yes.
Little spur.
Yeah, this is off the property.
Yeah, that was not supposed to be a driveway spot and the surveyor.
On the larger lot, the driveway cuts across the property.
Uh, which spot? Yeah, so that's a, an exemption and, and it's, it's in the deed that that's.
You do have a, so you have.
Is an easement?
So.
Yeah.
When I bought the property, the garage that's, looks like it belongs to my property, doesn't actually belong to my property. Years and years ago, there was a family dispute and.
We should have something to that effect on the map.
Okay.
If, if it's a file.
It's in the deed.
Yeah.
So it should be on the map as well if there's.
Okay.
I mean, there is a statement that, you know, our rights and covenants and restrictions of record. Are in force.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't know.
Something.
Yes.
Specific.
Yeah, more specific that refers to that approach.
Even if that was existing.
Yeah.
In the past, I was the house built in nineteen fifty something. So add an easement for that, but a driveway on the map.
Well, if it exists, just reference the, where Page and Libers or wherever it exists.
Reference where it's in the deed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, showing the wells being separate from. You know, the proper distance from all septics in the area and showing the locations of the septic seems to be the. And the ag statement seems to be the main. Main thing, anybody?
Sure, septic's on the right property.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's. Some wetlands nearby or close to it. That, so all resources should be shown, so if they're on it or whatever, I don't know what's on there, I didn't look at the map yet. Only might have that.
Please.
No.
N W I.
Yes, that was, that's the only thing I've not thought of the surveyor about yet. Because I was unsure where that lies with on the map. I know obviously a little bit of stream runs to the back. And the five years that I've been there, I've never seen it wet as I have this.
It's, it's not.
The.
It's on this corner. Like the east lines and maybe approaches.
That's interesting, if they show that as a gorge, but these lines still.
Six point.
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make any sense at all.
Contour wise, it doesn't.
The contours don't seem accurate.
Where?
Well, if there's a gorge, right, and it's going down, the contour should show that.
Yeah, so on the back, it's, if you walk to it in one section, it's like probably a twenty, thirty foot drop down.
Oh my God, this is not showing.
And then the further down part, so if you start, um, I didn't bring another. If you're on the six and a half acre parcel, that's where it's deeper, if you go to the three and a half, half acre parcel, there's no like. Drop off, that's just streaming like maybe a two foot.
These contours are not, not correct.
Okay.
What, how many, what's the difference, they're ten foot contours?
Yeah.
But even that, that means that they're. Uh, which side's the higher? Seven thirty.
Going up to the road.
Yeah, that's really weird that that doesn't seem.
Yeah, because they should have a big. Book in on one way.
Yeah.
Can you get the surveyor to give us more information on that board, doesn't seem.
He should.
Seems like he's superimposed it just over the existing contours, it doesn't seem to. Relate to the grading.
I don't think this. It's not, yeah, it's not like it's a stream, it's a stream, like it runs water year round.
But you just said it was a twenty foot drop.
But it's to a stream.
So there's a stream right there.
So that makes it sort of the gorge or a stream.
So.
Stream.
So the contour lines, you know how they work?
Well, then it should say stream.
Right, and, and so if it, if this is where it's dropping, the contour lines are going across. Where you say it's dropping, so that's why I'd say it's a little confusing about.
So.
If that's.
Is it a seasonal stream or does it run year round?
What if it's flat season?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's to show that it's throwing, that it is dropping, yeah.
Yeah, showing it flat.
Yeah, yeah.
And i- if it is a stream, then to show that hundred fifty foot upper.
Yeah, add that.
On the plan, okay.
Hundred fifty foot setback or no development.
Yeah, if the stream is within the gore, show the stream indicates.
But does it need to say stream and gore or stream?
Well, I would think it's, I think we're gonna call it a stream, but that's. It's a stream.
Whether it triples or not.
Oh. Okay.
So, does change the name of the stream or does it have to change contour lines as well, but like. Or you can't change your contour.
We use the contour lines running, running perpendicular to the stream. So you can't tell anything. It's either, you either got to put in more contour lines to give us.
Usually the contour will go, show you that it's sloping and the contour lines is not, are not indicating it's sloping within the gore.
Gotcha, so.
Kind of showing them that it's just.
It's like one flat surface sloping.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. Okay, so I have. Or align.
Yeah, I, I guess. I guess the question is, did he really survey this or didn't take it from a USGS map?
I can't answer that.
Because that may be that.
No, where it is in the.
When I bought the property, there was not actually an existing survey.
Right.
So he surveyed everything. I saw nothing when I bought it. There's nothing on record.
Yeah, but did he do a possession survey, which is the boundary? Yeah, but that's could be just a boundary survey, the topo could have come from a USGS map. So the question is, was the topo survey, being on the property and surveying the property line?
I know.
Yeah. But that may be the reason it's not showing it correctly.
Is this in the ag district? And it still couldn't be?
Because six point four, five, nine, it would have to be at least seven. For interpretation or something.
To be an average debt average.
Over thirty five.
You could have done three now, you'd have to average it. But you do average less than three and a half.
Yeah, well, the other one that we're gonna look at, one point five acres.
It would have to be.
All right, so we have any?
And this is.
Okay, so we don't have to worry, worry about that note.
Yeah.
It doesn't go like that on here.
And it's.
It's on a different angle.
What are we looking at? Yeah, no, what is, what is that map?
It's, it's just a. GIS map with the county parcels on it.
What, what are you binding?
So there's.
Binding.
Somewhere that claims that my property was actually seventeen acres when I bought it, like I don't know if you've ever heard of the Honecks on.
The house next door was all.
The one.
So that may answer.
That was.
We go past your house and.
Yes, that was all one, that's what was seventeen acres, so that's probably what that map you're looking at.
Yes. I'm like this.
Was something about, what caused, what caused the property to reduce?
Yeah.
There is something.
They just, they, they guess they, you know. Broke it up in the business piece, the east piece, that's been off of there for a while.
For splitting up notes.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise this would add into that, even if this.
Right.
Right, if this was taken off of a larger parcel.
I'm talking from. Maybe, I lose track of time.
It's like yours is like ten acres.
It says ten acres, but it's so.
That's important, yeah. No, it wasn't established.
I don't have property that helps.
So it hasn't even been. Ten years.
I.
Two thousand fourteen.
And this night, I've added to what I'm assuming the map you're looking at.
Yeah.
Is that the one that shows all the greenery and everything?
Two thousand fourteen.
It's just, it's a.
Two thousand fourteen.
Same thing. Um. So I.
You don't think it was?
I bought it. Today.
Before then?
Yeah, there is, there's an N W I wetland up here.
Just like. Reese.
And there's one over here, there's an N W I here.
I don't know.
A state or, but that's way away from the water, so.
But I actually go on to my property with the correct lines.
Right.
With those lines.
With these lines, that's why it's saying there's further distance.
So I'm in a, a Y.
Right.
And.
The surveyor should be able to access that, but again. He should make sure it, if it's even on the boundary line, he should be showing that here.
That was.
This is an N W I, these are actually state regulated, that's not. This is the one I'm saying the, the shape is. So here's N W I, that's F W I.
So my, my thought is that this is straightforward enough, if we get the information. I don't think we need to send it to the consultants or set up an escrow.
No, I don't think so either, because you're not proposing.
No development.
To the houses, they're, they're just, just putting the. Um, it is required that we make a site visit though, um, so. Um. Some, if that's okay that you can.
Once, I.
Well, he would set up the time.
Would I have to be present?
Only if you want to be.
Or could they be present, because I'm not in the area.
Yeah, whoever. You know, if you feel we need.
Just gonna go nosy and around, if you want to watch us through the window or come out and meet us.
Yeah, you don't have.
I'm not gonna be around, if it's like, if it's tomorrow, I'll be here. If it's next week, I will.
No, it would have to be scheduled.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be noticed.
And so mainly, I think, you know, just for us to, I don't know, is it flagged, is it?
He did not flag the subdivision pins yet until.
Oh. Okay, so we'd be kind of guessing, I guess it would just give us idea, is it walkable in the woods to get to the stream?
More or less, I mean, you're gonna be walking through brush and.
The bram, really brambles like for.
No, I.
It's not that.
I, I leveled it down more.
So we can.
Yeah, that would.
You should say what we walked. Yeah.
Okay, so. We got the additional information, Jay, you'll set up a time for a site walk. Um. Right now. We're having issue with the date for the December meeting. Because of Hanukkah, so we're trying to. Um. For a convenient time that's gonna work. At worst case scenario, it may not happen till January. But we can't get a meeting, so I'm just a meeting date, because there's other things that go on.
Yes.
So I'm just letting you know, our, our intent is to find a date that works in December, but if it gets too close to the next meeting, it just doesn't pick.
Okay.
So with that said. Um, Jay, you'll set up the walk dates.
For that. Do sketch plan approval and who's declaring?
So we can do that, I think.
I think so, I think we should be able to do that.
Yep. Can I get a motion?
I was gonna say, I make a motion to approve sketch plan and declare. As lead agency.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, okay, so you have sketch plan approval. You don't leave empty-handed. Well, so whenever our next meeting.
So right now, to do a reference on the new. On the map with, with the garage. On the one side, correct, and then add the contour lines of the string. And then ask about the total on the map.
Show something in the world.
Yeah, so, yeah, are there any numbers for those? And then I had him asking about the N W I, what land still?
Yeah, just to make sure that it's not on your property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I know too, I think.
Yeah.
You had that already in.
Okay.
Oh, you can keep, do the whole order of the house.
Okay.
But I know you guys wanted seven, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like electronic copy from your surveyor too.
A new electronic copy, I'd say he has one already.
Yes, the revised one. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll nominate the seven revised.
And yeah.
You can get them, yeah, fourteen, was it, ten days, whenever.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Well, that's a little flex.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
So.
You can get a survey to do something in a week, God bless you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ones that you went on. Of the. Yeah.
Oh. You have, no, I don't, uh, wait, kind of, no, I don't, sorry. So it's.
So this thing says fourteen days.
Yes.
This is the subdivision.
And as he, he a.
That person thing, this thing says fourteen days prior to the meeting. Those things.
So we gotta clean up everything, you should all.
Make a note of that.
Ten days makes no.
Go on, I do have it. I will. Copy to those. Okay, I will do that. Probably tomorrow. All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will see you guys in a month.
All right. Uh, bro, sketch plan conference subdivisions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here in July of last year. And got a. Um, conceptual approval.
Okay.
Put together all of what I think you need. And then, uh. Now we went to the. Basically, nothing is changing, I'm just taking my house away from the, uh, the barn, the road already splits the property. Property is the same as it has been. Since I bought it twenty-three years ago. So, uh. I went and had it, uh, Board of Health approved, I had my, uh, surveyor come and locate it on the map. Where the approval is for. Um. But I guess that's what you told me that I needed, because I was making a, a new piece of property out of it.
Understood.
This as well. Yeah.
Okay. Jay, can you give us any information on this, where, where we are?
So we've gone through a couple of different revisions, um. There was previously a problem communicated with the surveyor, which I think is now resolved. Um, they have been responsive in terms of. Coming back to my office multiple times, um, the initial application fee is paid. The EA app and ag data statement have been revised.
So this was, this piece was always. Separate from this, or did we, did you?
Yes.
Separate this?
So long as I've owned it.
Was always two parcels, so you.
Two parcels, right, this and this were together.
That's separate. I see.
And I waited to come back with all of this. Till I had a. A buyer, and this is what, this is what I'm waiting.
Or this?
Yeah. Yeah.
But you're showing a new septic system on the. Farm lot. What is that for?
Say that to me.
You're showing a raised bed septic system, I'm assuming this is, doesn't have residents on it.
Let me see where we are here.
You can get out.
Actually, my house, it's me.
The, the note here.
The septic system, this is the barn, okay, this is my outdoor arena, this is the barn, that's where the septic system will be located.
For what?
For. Well, this is how the, this is how the Board of Health. Explained it to me.
Okay.
They give me the, they, they came, did all the test holes. But. You don't know what size septic is gonna go in there. So you can't make a plan on it.
Yeah, but it has, it depends on the use. What is the use for?
Well, the use will be for.
A toilet in a barn?
For the barn, yeah.
There's no residence.
Excuse me?
Or residence going in the barn?
Uh, at this point in time, I have no idea. But I mean, that would, that would, uh. Reflect on what kind of a design was put in this, this is a large area here, this doesn't look like a large area, but it's a large area. So whatever is necessary, there's plenty of room, put that in, but I mean.
Showing that it's possible.
I can't see a four or five bedroom, uh.
Right. Right.
Septic system going in there.
So it's showing that it could fit.
Oh, absolutely.
Are these being sold separately?
No, no, this is, I'm keeping this.
Oh, you're staying there.
This, I'm just separating this.
You're selling.
So I can sell that.
And you own the property behind it?
Yeah.
So you're saying we gave you sketch plan approval last year?
Yeah, so we have the.
And, and nothing has changed from that?
No. Nothing has changed here since I bought it.
Okay, because we can't remember.
I don't see the wells.
We're here.
Well, wells. They need.
The well is right, right here.
The well is hard to read, but it's, it's a well.
On both sides?
Yes, on both sides of the road.
There's a well here, and there's, I have.
Oh, I see it, tiny little pencil. Oh, my god.
Do you bring your magnifying glass?
Yeah, no. Yeah, there's one right here. It's a little dot, somewhere there's another one, I guess.
The other well is right.
Meter well, what's?
No way, it's up here, right? I know, because I've run over it a couple times.
Okay. And so you got one there and one there.
Lots of water there, the wells. Nothing has changed there in the twenty-three years that I have owned it.
Can we make a site visit?
Excuse me?
Can we make a site visit? You need to.
Whatever you want.
If you wanna be there. We're, it's required, it says that we.
Alright.
Have to. Visit.
I can be there, I drive a school bus. So I can be there.
Well, Jay will coordinate times.
Okay.
Based on, give us a block of times, and we kind of pick from those blocks of times that works with you, if you want to be there to.
Yeah.
To show us.
Well, you got any questions, you know?
Sure.
It's helpful, yeah, if.
It's pretty straightforward.
My only concern is that a new buyer may come in there and try to turn that into a house residence.
Very well could.
Without a permit.
Is it gonna be big enough for what they're planning?
Well.
I just got the approval as requested.
Right.
Because you have a letter from the.
Excuse me?
You have a letter from the health department.
Yeah.
That should be part of the file. I didn't know we had it.
Yeah, 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 I know.
That's all.
You can't.
Architect would have to design the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if they're gonna put bedrooms in there and then based on that and.
Well, you can't have animals and people with the same building without a fire separation. Major fire.
Ed and I have met with the special purchases. Property and. Depend to keep. The farm operation.
And not live.
Likely for small, like accessory. Or like. Within, likely within the bond, so it'll be like a farm worker housing, except the farm worker will be. The future.
Right.
If everything.
So how would that bother you then, I mean, that would.
There's a two hour fire separation between animals.
That's a, that's an ed thing, right?
Yeah, I know, it's an ed thing, it's an ed thing, it just.
You should know that.
Yeah.
And that, um. That proposed septic location is also maybe not where it will be, because if you look at the requirements, whether it's. They really just. Did very local. And not throughout the new parcel or the proposed parcel.
Right.
So the future purchaser may. Do more with the O H and not need them.
Well. They can do whatever.
I don't know if they're gonna raise horses or what.
Right, it sounds like they're gonna keep it as a.
Yeah.
Horses?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
You don't care, I know.
We have to tear everything down.
I get, I get it, I get it.
Right, up to them. They're heading.
I guess. We have enough for a sketch plan, I guess.
It seems right, I mean, um, they got the egg. Um, and so this was always a separate parcel, and so as far as. Future subdivisions that this is. Only seven acres and that, so that also. The density with this just meets. Right, it said it on here.
Yeah, it, it, I've counted, it is fine.
So they couldn't do it.
This is your access to the property back there that.
Yeah, this is, this is the, uh, frontage on Crest Lane. For this eleven, whatever acres, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, what's this? Green?
Says east edge of field and west edge of brush.
Okay.
So this is the field. This is the brush.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some woods in here, it's not real, it's, it's not, I, I wouldn't consider it, it gets wet in the spring. But you couldn't water your, you couldn't water your critters.
Colleen, if you looked for. Wetlands that might be.
They were not, they were not, no. They're not.
That's on, that's on somebody else's property.
Yeah, but believe it or not, the setback still applies to your property. The setback still applies to your property.
For what?
It'd have to be a hundred and fifty feet, even if you wanted to do something.
Oh, I see what you mean, I see what you're saying.
It is, yeah, and I looked at the edits that you made and they look.
So we're good on that, no, no flags.
Okay. So. Lead agency and sketch plan. And we'll set up a sidewalk. Can I get a motion?
And do we? I'll make a motion. For sketch plan. And.
Lead agency.
Lead agency, thank you.
Well, in favor. Alright, so you have sketch plan.
Sketch plan.
That's part of the, the sequence of events.
That means you're okay with what you showed.
Oh, okay. You gotta explain, I'm just, oh, hillbilly.
Gotta do the sidewalk and it's a public here.
Do we? Set that. For the public hearing for next month? We have to make a motion for that. Well, I, that was a question. Ready to go.
Problem is, we don't know when it is, that's the.
The hard part, because of that.
This is my wife. It's actually my other set of ears, because I got four. Who bought from store, who don't work anymore.
So that's why we're kind of on the.
Yeah, no, we get it, but we have some dates that we have to, that we're committed to legally.
What, do they have a timeframe for you that they?
I, I think they'd like it sooner rather than later, you know?
Yeah, it is what it is, you know?
Right, we can't. Not do any of the.
No, that's, that's, that's fine.
And the public hearing that is required.
Can we, can we make the motion for the public hearing?
I, we were just saying that, but we don't know the date. Because we don't know our December.
And the notices have to go out so many days before and then.
So, but can, everybody's here right now, can we pull out a calendar? And, and like, let's pick that date.
Well, don't, but sometimes we gotta check with the rest of the.
Did check with the rest of the town hall.
Okay.
There is no court on the Wednesday. Proceeding, so December sixth.
I like that, I like that idea a lot, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Wednesday, December.
Yeah.
Think one person said that they were.
That was me. And, um.
Well, you can't own.
Gonna happen. You, you, my mother.
Oh, no. So we have two people that really can't do this.
Well, I, I mean, you have people.
Well, we'll see, yeah, so Phil, you're good, good with the six, that's one, Colleen, two, Joe, three. Four, five.
We don't know about Ann and.
You don't know that.
Ann and Palmer, how many do we need?
We need five members.
Okay, you guys, to show up.
We need five members in the room.
How come we didn't get invited?
If, if, I will be around. If absolutely required, I.
We need four members in the room for a call.
Uh, this is okay for me.
It's a Tuesday, is anything going on here on a Tuesday?
Hold on.
I don't know.
Aaron, do we have C A C that night? No, it's the next.
Second. Yeah, we have the R.
I mean, if there was something in this room, we probably do it in the conference rooms, it's really active.
As long as it's labeled.
Well, we have to have the.
Tuesday works, right?
Yeah.
It worked for me.
Alright, what, why don't we go with the Tuesday? And we'll confirm to make sure the room's available.
But that's December.
It's a Tuesday.
The six works, we're just gonna have.
Can I, um, get a motion to schedule the public hearing?
I make a motion to schedule the December meeting, can I jump ahead of you? Wait a minute.
So I will reach out.
Motion, yes, we don't need any of the, additional information. We're happy. Right?
For this?
Yes.
Yeah, and then if we can schedule that site visit.
It's gotta be before then.
This, we can. Not a, not a big deal. We're supposed to, it says we have to.
Whatever you need.
Yeah, if you could just ask the survey to make those well notes a little bigger, some people.
Absolutely.
That's, I think that's, I mean, you're gonna have to bring more copies that have to be.
But you're happy with this from his standpoint, with the exemption of the well location.
Oh, the well location's okay, it's just hard to find.
Okay, alright.
Little bigger, a little darker.
Alright.
We have to just pick on something, but everything else is.
This one better for you?
I don't know. No, I don't need glasses, I just couldn't find it. No, I, I can, I can read all day long, it, it's, it's just a little small.
I don't, I can, I can ask.
Yeah, I just have a lot of problems, I don't know why this is blue.
And how many more, um, maps would you require for the next?
It depends how many you want, usually we ask for seven.
Okay.
Yeah, we give you back three or four, whatever, because that has to go to the county for five.
You need a digital one too?
Additional. Okay. That's good. Jay, you want this? Alright, you're good, um, so we have a date, we have a scheduled public hearing and. We'll see you next month. So there's a gentleman sitting in the audience. Would you like to introduce yourself? And tell us what you're here for.
Hi. Yeah, good evening, uh, my name's Lee Smith and I, uh. Have a company called American Solar Partners.
Can you take a couple steps back to some of the people in Salt Lake City, and, and, um.
You're still headless. You're still headless.
Uh, so, uh, I've been working with Rick Osavsky for a number of years, um, at, at Ronnie Brook Farm, uh. Done a couple, um. Did a project to help them get some additional financing to expand facilities. Um, and then more recently, we're proposing to install a five hundred kilowatt. Solar power system.
Well, while you're playing with that, I have a quick question, were you the? Prior? Because there was an application by him prior, were you, were you involved with that also?
Yeah, so we started working on this idea a number of years ago, and we went through the process and we, we got to the point. Close to. Getting a permit going ahead, and then.
We gave you approval.
We got it, yeah.
You gave us approval for a hundred and sixty. Kilowatt system. But, um. Conditions changed for the, for Ronnie Brook. And they decided to not go forward at that time with, with the project. Uh, economic conditions. Um, now, you know, a number of years later, I guess about four years later, uh. Ronnie Brook's doing well in, in the sense that their business is good. They have, um. Very high electricity cost. A big item for them. Um, and the idea here is that, uh, with, with this system, we would be able to meet a hundred percent. Of their electricity needs. And that would really help them a lot economically and put them on a solid footing. Um, so the, the system we've designed. Is going to be, uh, compatible with the existing land use. Because what we're going to do, and you can see it in, in the drawings. But usually a ground mount solar power system occupies the land, and you may have seen that with, including scale proposal, etc. What we've done in our design is to elevate. The, uh, uh, platforms. Seven feet. Uh, and this is just a design that we learned about from, uh, experience in the Midwest. In Minnesota, Wisconsin, where they've been doing this. And it allows the cows. To go underneath the arrays. Which is great, it also gives them shape, which they like a lot in, in the summer. And the university in Minnesota has done studies of this, and it's good under body temperature and all this, so. It doesn't need to increase milk production, but, uh, it does make their life a little better. Uh, but the main thing from a, from a point of view, and, and he's sorry he couldn't be here tonight, he had to, uh, go to court. He's representing somebody in justice court, um. This will allow him to continue to use this land area as pasture. And his cows continue to use it, so, um, we, it, it adds to the cost, it's not that. An increase, but it does add to the cost. Um, and so the array will be elevated. The seven feet, so that. The cows can move underneath it. And, uh, it will produce, um, enough electricity to meet a hundred percent of their needs. Uh, uh, as they're currently, so the very exciting project for them economically. Um. In terms of, uh, our site plan and things, it's, Jay's been very helpful to us in terms of. Uh, guiding us through some of the issues under the special use permit. Um. And we think we meet all the, uh, requirements, the, there, there are wetlands near it, but we're quite a. Big feet from them, we're not approaching on them. Um, and. It's wholly contained within his. His farm itself, and it's a long distance from any neighbor's, uh, houses. And it's a long distance from other property lines. So, um, it'll fit nicely within, you know, this area just, uh, to the north of where the processing plants. Uh, is, and, um. You know, we're excited to do this project, it'll be kind of unique. As an example of how you can make solar compatible with agricultural land, which we think is an important idea. Um, and it'll, it'll be a, a real move for them, and. We have been able to secure some, uh, a grant from, uh, the US Department of Agriculture for the project. Um. Which is, it's, it's gonna be very helpful, um, and we'll also have, um, federal tax credit. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a good project, um. The, uh, wetlands areas are nearby, but not. Uh, touching on it.
You, you said me, it's in the past, you had submitted for a progress like this. So you got a permanent payment for us.
Yeah, we submitted in the past and.
The better people was and what you're doing now, is it the land area, either the size?
Well, there's two things, one is the, um. The system that we're. Proposing will meet a hundred percent of their needs. The old system wasn't. Designed to do that, and the, that. Electricity cost was a less pressing issue back then, plus his operations used less electricity back then. But he, he has expanded his capacity.
I guess I was looking at the impact on the. On the area, in other words, terms of size, there are these more efficient panels, you're doing the same, the same, you know, the, getting more.
The panel, yeah.
Same area, uh, with the other ones. Same area, uh with the other ones, it's curious, the other ones down in the ground, opposed to being seven.
Right, the old, the old design was um um flush to the ground and 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 whereas this one we've gone to the um ex- expense of designing an elevated system. There was less concern about the agricultural land use. Right. Back then, but now there's more concerned about, so we came up with a design that takes that into account. That's, so it's it, that's the big difference.
Right.
In from the design point of view.
Okay.
Couple things, I mean, the the low edge is seven feet, the upper edge is closer to twelve feet.
Yeah, when they're up like that.
Yeah, okay. I guess um but seven feet, practice don't fit under seven feet, at some point you gotta replant this, I would think.
But I get count.
What? Well, no, you gotta.
Cause you dig, you have a machine that digs holes to they send concrete.
Might come to it to grow them?
It's not gonna create enough shade.
No, certain grasses will.
There's shade part of the time on, you know, but the uses that they, the studies have shown that you you your crops, different grasses do grow underneath it, it doesn't become bare.
Great idea.
Yeah, I've read studies about that.
Yeah.
Where they are starting to elevate.
Even growing food now. And things that develop in shade.
Exactly.
I think the concern would be is um how big an area does this take?
It's uh twenty seven thousand square feet.
Well, more than half an acre.
That's within.
And I guess we're gonna wanna see something from the road to see if we're gonna see this thing, I guess, right?
That was.
The blue on the map, that's what's are gonna be, right, okay?
Yeah, yeah, those, that's you're right.
Prospect is way up here, I think, right?
So coming this way, you're looking.
So you are below. I don't know how to describe it, but the way the road comes up, at least from this.
Yeah, it's a curve and a dip.
Probably might, you might see the tip of them if they're elevated, if they were ground mount, I don't even know if you'd see them, because the barn is right there.
Barn blocks the view.
Yeah.
Road is coming downhill, it's a slow.
Right.
Yeah.
That's from from the other side.
From the other side, it's it's flat, you might see them that way, but um I know that, I mean, the barn is gonna create a visual. You look at the environmental assessment form, because there's a couple of edits on it that's that you that might need to be made, one of them is.
I believe what you have put where you arrived and Ed put it on the common area table on Wednesday. And we sent in earlier today and edited an edited version of it, we picked up a few typos on.
And I think I think that even though these are on site, that this wetland should rigor thirteen A, question thirteen A on there, it should trigger it as a yes. But it doesn't, cause it's an adjoining parcel, it's not right on the site where it's gonna be, but it may trigger that.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
This is um like a pre-application.
Yeah.
And I couldn't really know.
There's no batteries associated with this, are there? You're just gonna run the meter backwards?
Most of the power, well, well, to to the extent that power is exported to the grid, yeah, so it would go backwards, but most of the power will be absorbed by the existing load.
Central Hudson approves of the system.
Well, they they will, I mean, we got interconnection approval the last time, they 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 will.
It's a much larger system.
Yes, but it's within their guidelines.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I know when you.
It was in ours.
Solar, I just did solar too. I know, only allow, yeah, only allow a certain.
Twenty five kilowatts.
Yeah. Uh you know, consider much you, or above and beyond, too much.
Yeah, well, when you do a um a a commercial scale or or agricultural use, the 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 rules.
Different.
Are a little different, the residential, like Kathy, was twenty five kilowatts. Which is arbitrary on their part to begin with, but that's the utility business. But this is, they 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 treat different.
On the panel that you have, is there is a requirement for like a certain amount of reflectivity off the panels?
Uh. Yeah, these have a, these have a non-glare surface um and um in the in the in the spec tubes, it describes the way in which the panels surface is is treated so that there's reduces the glare.
But can you give us any, comes back to the, I think it's a two percent reflectivity in the zoning code that I was reading? Just so we can do it to Harrison.
I can look into that for you.
It's such a big array that you really.
Yeah, if you could bring a piece of the surface, a piece of the panel, that would be helpful. You could bring a sample of the glass that the panel is made of, that would be very helpful. I don't need a whole panel, yeah, come in here, is there any structure required for the for the transfer gear and all that stuff, transfer switch?
No, I mean, we comply with electrical code, national electrical code and we we have to comply with uh the uh Central Hudson's.
Yeah, where you're putting it.
Yeah. What, the way it's gonna work is the uh the modules will be on the structure and that'll be DC and then there'll be um the the wires will bring it down to the device, the inverter, which changes it to AC and then it will feed into the.
Is it, is it an inverter per panel, like a mini inverter, or is it larger?
No, for something like this, you use a a hundred twenty five kilowatts uh commercial scale uh central inverter.
Okay, that'll be a central piece of equipment, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be four of them.
Any noise? Any exceeding noises?
No, just cow, cow noise.
No, solar doesn't make any noise.
No, with the transportation of.
They actually don't have much of a.
I think Central Hudson needs to replace the transformers on the local poles, I think they have to do something on that to accommodate uh the reverse power going back.
So one of the things that says in our code is that uh for a permanent plaque, did you read that, do you know about that? So for. Yeah, um permanent plaque or directory placed in an exterior location that is readily visible to firefighters.
Yeah, that's that's a standard thing that we do.
That's an Ed thing, so Ed.
Yeah, Ed sure that. Ed'll tell you where to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's covered by the national electrical code and.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, you you have and and some jurisdictions have additional requirements, but you have to have a plaque to tell them where the disconnect switch is. If there was a plaque to tell them it exists, various things, then you have to have another one at the at the switches, the disconnect. If to show, you know, that so when you enter the property, there would actually be a sign saying where the disconnect switch is.
Yes, yeah.
Cause you don't wanna backfeed, that's the.
Right. So I'm just a little, I'm about the view from this side.
Cause you, it's pretty.
This is a transforming panel thing over here. Big transformers. I'm visualizing it.
I don't know, but this is very open and as you're coming in this direction, these are gonna be very visible, I don't know with for an ag application, it's different, but.
Um like visual screening.
Yeah. Um I mean, from the other side, the barns and all through that, so I don't know if we.
Yeah. Like a balloon, I mean, you could do a balloon test at whatever the maximum height that they're gonna be, twelve feet.
Like.
Yeah. Like actual impacts.
Well, I guess my first question is, because it's an ag.
To be even.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You know.
This part of the farm operation.
Right, right. When it, when it's a private residence, they were required to screen it from neighbors. Doesn't actually say from the road, but um.
I know, yeah, like if, yeah, it wouldn't.
So the height is fine, so our maximum height is fifteen feet, so this is you know, I guess.
They're like eleven nine.
Yeah, so the height is not a problem, um I mean, it's a I mean, it doesn't bother me to see him, but I, you know, I wanna make sure that um.
Well, I think if it's it's part of the farm operation, how much control is to be in that?
Right, right, right. Right.
Yes, sort of part of that.
Right.
That's why I look, sorry about just.
Mostly it says screening should be provided from adjoining lots and I don't think there's any adjoining lots that would see it. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything from.
These are facing this way, by the way.
These are.
Yeah, cause this is north, so.
Right, but when you come this.
Yeah, this is the glass side.
Yeah, you're driving right towards it.
Yeah.
But actually, kind of the way the road goes and the and the way the layout is, when you're driving up the road, the array is gonna be back up.
That's what I'm thinking.
And but coming from the other direction, you're going north.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Oh, okay.
So you're coming up and the array is back up, so it's it's not like next to the road or not visible, it's it's up the slope a little bit and there's stuff in in between. And then there's the barn there, so it's it's not that prominent.
This is lower, but I I don't, I guess we.
I always go just the other direction, I don't usually go north, um but I I still think because it's an ag that we don't wanna do undue hardship to an ag operation. Able to do that anyway, if they were wanting to put up big old poop tanks, you got nothing to say about that either, you know.
Um I have an actual question about just how um accessible, say, for fire access is this back in here as far as getting around, maneuvering around it?
To the barns.
So like, yeah, cause you've got the barns here, like, I can't tell if that's like.
Yeah, this is such a small scale, you really.
If it's like, would it, like, you know what I mean, like, if they're stuck in the way to prevent access to the panels to get trucks or hoes, like, to get in there to actually fight a fire if needed. Um.
Well, when you come up uh to 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 the processing plant, you know, to the processing center here to the right of it is kind of a flat area, a row of, it's it's not, it's more like a lane.
Right.
You know, that they use to get up to their barn.
Right.
Over over here. So they have access to it.
I I'm just, my concern is, I know what it gets like in the in the mud season and it's not easy. To the to everything, cause it gets very muddy up in there and so getting I'm just concerned about just making sure that access is there to keep it safe, actually traveling to the.
Is your feeling that panels are combustible?
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, you would wanna get to the disconnect.
Right, you'd wanna be able to do that, but I'm saying if there was some sort of issue, what if something underneath that caught on fire, like the grass, we gotta fight it, you know, but it's it's not un-uncommon. You know, just just making sure that there's just access, good accessibility in there to get into that.
Right? And you gotta drive a truck.
Yeah, drive a truck up to it.
Gotta get the truck.
And this, this, so I just wanna make sure that like this dr- this road here is.
Show a drawing.
Yeah, just making sure.
Fire access.
Yeah, access road is good, just so we can get up in there.
At least on one side, I think.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, this could be five hundred feet, we'll find out, but.
Question also get clarified by flagging. Um because they're still at the pre-application phase.
Right.
So if they do flag it.
Yeah, so we can do a site visit and just kind of get a sense of where it is and corners, like you said.
Yeah, like the corners of it, just to get an idea of the size of it, I mean.
It doesn't have to be by a surveyor, but somebody that can put with some markings.
What's this green box?
That.
There's something on the, it's a sketch plan that goes something, it's the AC.
Pounds have air conditioning?
Yes.
Nice, good for them.
I think it's alternating current.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for us, sir?
So what's the process going forward? So this is the uh
preliminary.
Preliminary conference, we would like to move ahead to the next stage.
Well, I would check with Ed at the building department and Jay and see.
Go over all your.
This is a special use.
It will collect the poll application. Where are you um ask for?
Solar.
Needs to be reviewed. I think. I mean.
Go back to the right to farm, I know, it's kind of, it's like. I don't know, maybe you could just ask Nana a question, Jay, that.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Tell her what we're dealing with and, you know, it's an ag operation.
Right.
The right to farm law kind of prevents you from stopping a farmer from doing anything.
It's already so slick and you about the um one hundred and ten percent. Um so they are basically.
Okay. Yeah, just double check and see.
So we should pay the five hundred dollar fee? And then we'll go over, I'll go over the forms, make sure you have that big and. Can we follow up with you on that next Monday? Yep, and um then plan on being here at the December's. What did he say? And then they'll go over your application and map provision and then hopefully it's right there for the public here and. And then do you wanna go up and uh visit the site?
Yeah, I think we'd like to take a peek.
Do you wanna do that? In the next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he said it was fifty kilowatts?
Five hundred.
No.
Five hundred.
Yeah.
How many kilowatts?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah.
So our thing is twenty five or less for small scale solar system building integrated, so.
There is a commercial.
There is a, there is one, but that's, but it's not a commercial, I mean, it's for a commercial to have it, or it's a.
This is a milk operation.
Solar project, which it isn't, it's still a private. So on the use table, it's residential accessory, so if then it's agricultural related.
Farming and ag use.
Business uses. So business uses, but it's a farm, so it's not a business.
Farm is a business.
But but the solar is, if it's under that list, means it's a solar business.
No, it's servicing a business.
Yeah, no, solar business would be like.
Yeah, you're selling.
That would be a difference.
Where where is it then?
Selling their solar.
Where is it in the use table, that's all, that's all I'm trying to figure out.
Perpetation I got when I was having issues with my turbine, from Ag and Market. Is anything on a farm is a piece of farm equipment, if it's being used as part of the farming. This is producing the electric for farming.
Right.
So I'm 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 toy, it's.
Right, but if, then why is it to the planning board?
Maybe it shouldn't be here. Maybe it shouldn't be here.
The the alternative is no review.
Right, and that's what we're asking. Right. So that's why I'm questioning if it's before us, it should be on here that it says for planning board, whether it's a special use permit. Or site plan reviews to tell us what we're reviewing.
This is still a free application.
For what? A site plan review, a special use permit.
Especially. We may need help from Nana on that.
Was, I think, based on Ed's conversation with you and Nana. I will. Once we have a full application, we'll get the referral. Um Ed and I went through. Two weeks ago or a week and a half, ten days and so, that's Monday. And went through the checklist for the. Commercial special use permit application, and we wound up rewriting basically every requirement. And I said, I can put it on the agenda for.
Commercial.
Okay, so the biggest, the biggest question is, wh- what are we reviewing it for? So we need that answer.
So.
What are we following here?
You you are referring to your town attorneys as. Um you mentioned a couple of people.
Okay, so I'm going to check in with the zoning enforcement officer.
Um so under business, it just says so. It sells solar energy equipment, it doesn't leave anything about solar. I know, but first you have to find it in the use table. Before you start following the other regs. So we have to find it in the use table, so under business uses.
Well, it should be on the ag use, we have permitted use on the ag uses.
No, ag, that's, we don't have a whole thing, agricultural related commercial. Right, that's what you're saying, yeah. There's no solar under this.
Well, then there should be.
So.
Go back to the committee. That's what happens, you try to cover everything, it's impossible.
Yeah.
Need another two years, that's the new rules. And they basically told ZRC that. They don't want you regulating to them.
Right.
They want to promote.
Right. So, but what we did was, we. Tried to set up standards that if something big like. Shepherd's Run were to come to Ankrum. We'd have some law.
All of farms, yeah, that was the first request I got from the property I sold, they wanted to.
That's what a lot of towns have done.
Yeah, so so we have something.
A set of rules to cover solid farms.
Yeah.
Because that's what they're.
We have to have something to start with, otherwise, we have no regulations at all.
We can't see ten acres.
So we we have supplemental regs, like like, um so we have solar energy systems.
Yeah.
For all onsite power lines, blah blah blah, ground mounted and freestanding. Um. And then we have a list here, but it still is not showing up on use. Yeah, it's.
Well, let Nan. Let Nan.
We don't know.
Tell us what we're supposed to do.
And Nan will make a note to fix it in the use table if it needs to be in the use table, so she's the.
Oh, yeah, because. Yeah.
It is, so you signed up for that. Okay.
So um I'll. Get more information to you and talk to you further and we'll follow up and.
Yeah.
I'll send you the check. Or I can give it to you tonight, whatever, I'm heard.
We wait until um I'll speak with that on Saturday about it.
Okay. Good.
Okay, hopefully helped you.
It's a process and that, you know, we understand that. Know you got a job to do, we have a job to do, so we're happy to, you know, try to work together to get this thing. Set up the right way.
No, and this is a great thing for them too, so you don't wanna be in the way.
No, so the next farm that comes along will have an easier time.
Once we know.
Ronnie Ronnie Brooke is the uh any face.
Well, we've had other solar panels for farms.
Well.
One that was growing hops.
And we did this last year for them. So what did we do?
My question is, are you following this? In the utility scale solar?
But it's not, this is not, you can, under that definition, this is not utility scale.
Not residential.
There's, but there's a different line for that. I s- I think.
I think that's more solar farm for commercial.
I thought so too.
She mostly is gonna be used on the farm.
Right.
That's the whole.
This is just, this is for individual use on the farm.
Right, but here, there's.
The other side, I do, that we did.
Yeah.
Since we now have a meeting date, can you schedule a public, do we need to schedule a public here?
For the other one? Which one? We need more information from it. The first, the first subdivision? Yeah, we need more information. Yeah, it's the, this, the the second one was complete.
Okay.
We need more information from that.
Right, and that, and that's why the other part of this is a small scale solar g- solar energy system is twenty five or less. This is farm.
Residential.
Right.
Solar farm scale.
Right, it's business scale, not residence, we we're regulating residential scale, because that's what Central Hudson says.
Right.
Twenty five megawatts, twenty five.
Well, that's our law, that's our town law says.
Does. And we're we're.
It would probably.
So if you look at the definitions on two nine, two ninety seven. I don't know if you have the same book as I do. Um so on. And it should be in there under definitions or small scaled solar energy system.
Yeah, it's on page twenty five of the older one, it that, but that's. A small scale solar.
I think our code goes from one.
Is twenty five kilowatt or less.
Right.
So this is one sixty, what do you say, one sixty? Five hundred, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Right, so this is the size of a, uh it's like a kid farm.
Well, not that. Solar farm would be even a lot.
But that, that, that's not that. This is, this is just for their own intentional use, they're not selling it. So it's not a solar farm.
Right.
It is a agricultural.
It's an energy.
Mission.
Right, right.
So we have good people who are on Zoom.
Okay, can we, are we done?
Okay, so we have anything else, any other business, Jay?
Oh, they're here.
Is that on?
Okay, so.
Uh that he meant that training we uh took. And we have another talk about that, we we took that Zoom meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
They don't give certificates for that.
No.
Contacted them. Um, boy, I can show you that, I got an email with a completion on it, but I don't know what that's gonna do for us.
Oh, we got a question.
Yeah.
Oh, we have a question.
Where?
Oh, hi, yeah, it's Amy Gold, um I just wanna say I live on the the road, um the same road as Ronnie Brook Farm. And if the solar, if the solar um. Installation is going in at the same area where the current solar panels are. It's not a visual impact at all to anybody. I I I believe it's not an impact to anybody that lives on the road.
Great, that's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We just still gotta figure out.
Yeah, because it's like that intermediate, it's like that intermediate size of.
Yeah, we go to one limit, one extreme to the other.
But you don't have that intermediate.
Nobody thought of.
Right.
Now we have, so.
But still, if it's just for one.
I mean.
Farm, it shouldn't. Probably shouldn't. Really matter if it's an agri, since it's agricultural.
Every commercial. There should be.
It should be in.
Some type of use.
Right.
Hello, we have somebody.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have somebody.
Did you? Give us your name?
Oh, yes, sorry, this is Adam Spurling, I'm uh. Uh just trying to renew the short term rental. But I'm not sure if you're there yet.
You skipped them.
Oh, you're here. So everything was in place for this, Jay? Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you next time.
Much appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'm glad you spoke up.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Anybody else out there? Whoever holds your peace.
Uh oh, somebody needs to be muted.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna run to the restaurant.
Don't run, don't fall down.
I will.